Clerk, please report on certification of the election and qualification of council members elect Stephanie Kim Cho Han and Norma Iris Vargas.
It is my pleasure to report that the Middle Sixth County Board of Elections has certified the election of Stephanie Kim Cho Han, sorry, Norma Iris Vargas as members of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park. Once they have subscribed to the oath of office and allegiance, they are qualified to assume their duly elected positions on the governing body.
Oath of office and allegiance administered to Councilwoman Elect. Kim Stephanie Kim Cho Han by Assemblyman Sterling Standard. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I. solemnly swear.
S solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of Highland Park Borough Councilmember.
Of Highland Park Borough Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You got it all through it. Ocean was like, yeah, 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 yeah. Oath of allegiance administered by Councilmember elect, two Councilwomen elect, Norma Iris Vargas.
They're too shy.
Okay. Hi.
Norma Iris Vargas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Highland Park Borough Council.
Of Highland Park Borough.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same. And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
Yay, it's a video. Now we go to the second part. Call to order open public meeting statement. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home Use Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on December 11, 2024, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exit to the left and right of council chambers. And Norm. I think she's shamed. Can you lead us in the pleasurable legion?
I'm sorry?
Pleasurable legions?
Pleasurable legions submitted by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, needed for liberty and justice for all.
And now we're going to have our invocation by Reverend Wanda Burrell. Lower it any which way you want. You can lower it down. Yeah.
Good evening. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we ask that you pray to give us guidance in our community and the decisions we make as a community. We earnestly seek your divine guidance, illuminate our path, help us choose the way of righteousness and justice. May your wisdom be our compass, leading us toward a brighter future for all. We trust in your guidance and know that with you we can navigate even the smallest challenges of our journeys. Amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Here.
Councilmember Hale.
Here. Here.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Attorney Shaw.
Here.
Administrator there.
Here.
Before I formally introduce our newly sworn in councilmembers, I would like to share a special video from Senator Cory Booker with you. Former administrator, could you please?
Sure, just give me a moment.
And this is a special message for the newly electeds.
The rights will not be.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to say a few words as you all gather today to swear in members new and old. Look, I remember the first time I raised my hand and swore an oath when I was a city councilperson. And I want you to know that now, in so many ways, as you're a senator, I revere this tradition. It's not rote, it's not routine, it's an affirmation of our heritage, of our governance, and of the thousands of people across our state who dedicate themselves to serve our communities. You all are the front line of meeting the needs of our constituents. They are our friends, they are our neighbors, they are our families, and in many ways, it's the deepest understanding of that word, to create community. Our state would not be able to thrive without dedicated public servants at the local and county level like you. So I want to thank every one of you for making this choice, for dedicating yourself to this great patriotic ideal, that we stand in service of each other. I hope you find, like I did, that serving is one of the most rewarding experiences you will ever have. It's hard, it's trying, it's around the clock, it's meaning going to the supermarket is a lot longer than usual, but it is truly the most incredible thing I've ever done professionally. I look forward to collaborating with you now. As you're a senator, the partnership between our levels of government that serve New Jerseyans and New Jersey families is so important, and I feel privileged that as you swear this oath, we will have an even more important role to play together. I wish you all the best. May our state thrive under our collective leadership. It's not about right or left, it's about all of us moving New Jersey forward.
May your calls for nomination of council president for the year 2025.
Mayor, I nominate our colleague Stephanie Kim Cho Han. Second.
Nominations close. 2025 Council President. Matt Joseph Cho Han. Welcome aboard. Roll call.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Certified.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Absolutely yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Okay, and to our outgoing council president, we have, our incoming council president has a small token of love.
Oh, how big you sound, I mean, hers.
Big deal.
Good idea.
Laptop and.
And a reusable cup. Laptop reusable cup in here. Thank you so much, Matt, for serving. Okay. And now it's time for the State of the Borough for 2024. I'm just going to give a quick overview. There is a whole lot for us to be proud of, to be encouraged by, and to be hopeful about in Highland Park. As I look back on last year, and as 2024 ended, there has been a remarkable number of positive changes and the continuation of a growing list of treasured Highland Park traditions. In the past year, we held ribbon cuttings, the mayor visited businesses, major renovations of public spaces, and upheld time honored tradition in our town. We were pleased to welcome and welcome back to our town in 2024 places such as our supermarket, so we had Super Fresh, Best Barbe Shop, Fresh Market Convenience Store, Curvallicity Cannabis Dispensary, Main Street Dispensary, Dee Dee's Pizza, formerly Highland Park Pizza, China Lee Restaurant, Evi's Restaurant, another fave, Me Too Tea and Flower Shop. We celebrate improvements on reopening of our vital features toward downtown. Highland Park Public Library was another huge success for us last year. Highland Park Community Center, Belt and Back Todd Lot, road and curb cuts on streets such as Dennison, North Second, North Fourth, Harper, Highland Avenue, Graham Street, South Eight, and other streets. We were pleased to see these improvements happen on these areas. We also enjoyed the continuation of a bunch of activities that give Highland Park a strong sense of community that we all treasure. These include Main Street Highland Park Farmers Market, Community Center Monthly Luncheons, Porch Fest, Park Stop, Highland Park Partners Grand Program, Birthday Fest, Flag Raisins for Pride Month, Juneteenth, and Caribbean Heritage Month, and other occasions. Outdoor Movie Theater, Highland Park 5K Race, Fourth of July Fireworks, Tom White Garage Sale, Window Art Work, Memorial Day Parade, and Veterans Day Parade, Spring Street Fair, Highland Park Street Festival, and Highland Park Police Department National Night Out, and much, much more. As we look ahead to this new year of 2025, I know that many of you will join me in eager anticipation of the start of a bunch of welcoming innovations, such as this on for South Third Plaza, and I want to say special thank you to the seven members, Sandy, who's here with us tonight, we're securing the funds, over a million, a million dollars. We're looking at Road Diet and Upper Raritan Avenue, new intersections, intersections for safety, improvements and parts of, and new intersection for public safety as a part of the Borough Safe Route to School Programs, major redevelopment project in Raritan Avenue, continued work by the MPP team to add vibrancy and new amenities to business and home on Woodbridge Avenue, the reorganization of the Human Relations Commission and the Mental Health Commission. As mayor, I can attest that these compelling elements of our committee are produced by many, many, many hardworking people, together in good faith and putting in a lot and lots of hours, who have overextended themselves on periods of time. Please join me in thanking some of the key players that made this all possible. Our Borough Councilmember Stephanie Kim Cho Han, Matt Hirsch, Matt Hale, Phil George, Jason Paulson, and the newest addition to our team, Norma Vargas. The chair and the chairs and activity members of the boards and commission and committee, the Arts Commission, the Hysterical Commission, Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, Sustainable Highland Park, Board of Health, Shaitree Advisory Committee, Environmental Commission, Universal Access Commission, the Mayor Team Advisory Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, the Rent Leveling Board, and the Main Street Highland Park Advisory Committee. I thank you all. For Borough staff in all the various departments such as code enforcement, community center, DBW, finance, water and store, communication, the Zone 16 Center, the public library, the Borough Clerk's Office, and the Public Administration Office. And on one final note, I want to thank you, you all, all the residents of Highland Park that have reached out and had offered their thoughts on how to improve our borough and to improve our services. Your continued support is greatly appreciated. Please keep those thoughts coming because collectively we can make Highland Park a better place. We benefit greatly from your input and your insights, and I hope you will continue to share your thoughts with us as we work tirelessly to improve our borough, Highland Park, small town for the future. Thank you. Motion to spread message upon the minutes. So move.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Resolution requiring a separate reading, 11 A, 1-25-01, resolution to adopt rules of order for 2025. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
11 B, 1-25-02, resolution to adopt mission statement of the Borough of Highland Park. May I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
11 C, 1-25-03, resolution to adopt 2025 municipal water and sewer temporary budget.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Consent agenda resolution. May I? May I ask if there's any council member that has anything that we might separate and call as a separate item on this agenda?
Your name.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda, 12 A through 12 P?
So does. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
I'm just like, especially with 1-25-19, our actual fire chief, a long time coming, but quite a great honor, quite a great person, and someone who is really working very hard in the new fire department, I don't guess.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
May his appointment to the following ADA Coordinator Scott Brescher, Library Board of Trustees, Rep. Phil George. May I have a motion to adopt ADA Court Leader Scott Brescher and Library Board Trustee Rep. Phil George?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
May his appointment to the following Arts Commission Ariana Astini, Board of Health, Dr. Norma Bo, Tracy Angino, Kathleen Smith, Health Inspector Parrish England, Health Inspector Annette Zambiro's Secretary, Community Development Black Grant, Deborah Morgan, Tara Conovera, Stephanie Kim Cho Han, Terri Hovair, Permission to Universal Access, Kimberly Persha, Marlene Tarnish, Scott Brescher, ADA Coordinator, Lieutenant Soden, Community Emergency Response Team, Bruce Nader, Susan Winter, Anne Shirley, and Cheryl White, Adalfo Giuliani, Nancy Wolf, Alyssa Kaplan, Pamela Postac, Ryan Douches, Susan Arney, H. James Polo, Sergeant Jason Halver, Sergeant Lieutenant Colombo Jr., also on aging, Angela Perone, Arlene Barnik, Kathleen Cathouser, Emergency Management Council, J. H. Polo, Sergeant James Halver, Chief Rich Abrams, William Hines, Scott Brescher, Lester Jones, Terri Hovair, Kim McGrath, Christina Soska, Norm Shammy, Michael Wazurkowitz, Nancy Wolf, Employee Safety Committee, Kim McGrath, Michael Wazurkowitz, Chief Richard Abrams, Detective Brian O'Mara, Jennifer Smith Mullin, Terri Hovair, Edward Carson, Janet Marsick, Jacqueline Vasquez, Norm Shammy, Jacob Allahan, Ethics Board Paul Ambos, Hysterical Commission, Darius Strolli, Donald Brett Beatham, Brad Zina Truilla, Tom Glenn, Michael Restepi, Darren Hand, Neil Fien, Jennifer Santiago, Christina Sokah, Mayor's Dean Advisory Committee, Emma Cho Han, Mary Ann Peel, Finn Bohis, Adessa Esther Rich, Highland Park Wellness Committee, Dr. Patricia Whitley Williams, Dr. Elliot Frank, Dr. Karen Evil Avery, Dr. Fisher, Bruce Fisher, Aston Burrell, Pastor Greg McCollan, Hayden Sun, Dr. Norma Bo, formerly, Abraham Loth, Father April, Jasposzansky, Dr. Cliff Lacy, Sergeant Gaitano, Colombo Jr., Eric Gonzalez, Ruth Byer, Eliana Bohan, Mental Health Commission, Detective Brian O'Meara, Karen Jabraski, Nicole Huff, Dr. Norma Bo, Aston Burrell, Ken Kessel, Elena Bohan, Ruth Byer, Municipal Alliance, Mayor Elsie Foster, Phil George, Detective Brian O'Mara, Christina Sokah, Karen Lane, Aston Burrell, Irene Marks, Kim McGrath, Adrian Sun, Public Information Commission, Kiki Wade, Lieutenant David Soden, Recreation Advisory Committee, Kathy Pace, Ryan Potter, Kenneth Hoskins, Andrea Alexander, Nicholas Camvitzis, Deborah Hare, Alex Duncan, Yudi Davis, Sean Harrison, Linda Schill, Rehabilitation and Screening Committee, Rebecca Hirsch, Wolf from Huffer, Deborah Rebecca Hand, Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, Lieutenant David Soden, Shaitree Advisory Committee, Rohan, Roseanne Baruch, Paul Sour, Karen Swain, Melanie McDermott, Kristy Van Horn, Marcia Schiffman, Margaret Ingrid, Karen Rabat, William Solis, Sustainable Highland Park, Paul Sour, Irene Renner, Mila. Mila. Mila, Alshu, She, Sri, Nicole Todd, Niece Todd, Rose, De La Angela, Irene Marks, Tina Weiss House, Claudia Faber, Mark Lesko, Christopher Perez, Lisa Nice, and Rose De Relenzio. Motion to confirm.
Roll call.
Motion to confirm. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
May her appoint the following: Environmental Commission Jonathan Abrams, Karen Swain, Alan Williams; Human Relations Commission Sarah Faria, Officer Caitlin Dean, Officer Brian Fitzgerald; Library Board of Trustees Roberta Kessel, Michael Rodriguez; Planning Board Alan Williams, Class Five, Bruce Matthew Hale, Class Three, Scott Brescher, Class Two, Patrick Millay, Class One, Alvin Chan, Class Five, Dan Stan Cardinal, Alternate One. No confirmation needed. Now it's time for public discussion. Fifteen minutes total, three minutes per speaker. Comments from members of public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attended. So.
Yes, Mayor, I see one hand up. Sal Baptist, please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sal Baptist. I live on Raritan Avenue. I was looking at the. I was looking at the Resolution one twenty-five oh eight that directs the Borough Administrator to make it a priority to look for, sorry, the exploration of new shared services and cooperative agreements in the areas of personnel, equipment purchases, and repair and maintenance. I just wanted to comment that the previous shared services agreement with the Rutgers Emergency Dispatchers has not worked out very well for many of the Highland Park residents. And you can see on the different Facebook communities, people are saying that they've had unacceptably long waits, or that when they called nine one one, it just rang and rang and rang and no one picked up. So I would be, I would like to remind the Borough Administrator and the council that a shared services agreement doesn't save us any money if it results in extremely poor services. So just to keep that in mind when looking into these things, that saving money at the cost of a residence is not really a small town with a big heart kind of thing to do. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No one look on Zoom. Okay, Mayor, I see a candid audience.
Please step up to the microphone and announce yourself.
I totally agree with the young lady who just spoke. I had called nine one one, no response, and the phone rings for five, six times, and also they get on the phone and they ask you a lot of questions, like an example, we have people stuck in our elevator. How do you know the people are stuck in the elevator? Well, they're screaming and they're banging and saying that they're stuck in an elevator. Well, how many people are stuck in an elevator? I don't know. Well, what floor is the elevator stuck on? You know, just get the fire department here. So I would urge you people to look into these shared services with Rutgers, and also reports are very hard to get. It takes you months to get a police report. Thank you.
Please, I step up to the microphone and announce yourself.
Karen Allen. Ramsey Avenue. Okay.
Yes.
I want to speak about the flashing stop lights, stop signs that had been put in on one or Catelyn and Madison Avenue, there are three of them. And I actually looked up the company that put in the advertise that we see a mile away, they're like the biggest and brightest, and they're not on timers, which most schools that have lights flash and go off after school hours. So now, all night long, these lights are flashing, and some of them are flashing directly into people's windows. We moved actually from West Second to Grant's because it was quieter and darker, and I also work at the school, so now I can walk there, but it's ruined the whole sort of vibe of the neighborhood. Take a walk on Friday night, Saturday night, used to be like the most peaceful neighborhood in the world, and now there's these flashing lights if you're in a disco or a bar or something like that. Anyway, I don't know if the lights can be put on timers, but there's certainly many of these flashing stop signs, stop timers that you can time accordingly, so they're not flashing through the night or on weekends when school's not in session. Thank you.
Seeing there's no, no one else, may I have a motion to close public participation? So moved. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonix.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Can we, Harry, can we look into if the flashing stop light can be some kind of timer or something?
Sure, I'll discuss with the PD or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, great. And at this time, I'm gonna ask Reverend Burrell to come and give us our benediction.
All hearts and minds clear. May the peace and the grace of God be with you all until we meet again. Amen.
Amen. Motion to adjourn meeting? So moved. Second. Our next meeting is scheduled for January twenty-first at seven PM. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.